Yeah, I believe we've got a quorum. So I will call the meeting of the Johnson County Planning Commission for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022 to order. Let us start with a roll call.
Mark Huggins.
Here.
Chris Eilich.
Here.
George Lund. Roger Mason.
Here.
Randy Hutchins.
Here.
Jim Nice.
Present.
Pete Johns is absent. Lindsay Grisay.
Here.
Kelly Rast is absent. Mike Levin.
Here.
Randy Downing.
Here.
Terry Atwell is absent. That completes the role. We have a quorum.
I'm going to do a short statement. I don't know. Do we have anybody online by any chance?
We do not.
Okay. I'll just read a short statement. Any person desiring to give evidence, comment, or testimony regarding an agenda item is encouraged to call or email the planning department prior to the date of the hearing. A little late for that now. The planning department will provide all comments and questions reviewed by the planning commission, and the comments will be made a part of the public record. Planning department may be reached by telephone at 715-2200 or email planner@joko.gov.org. Uh, we're not ready for public comments. Doesn't appear that there is any member of the public here, but perhaps I'm wrong. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on an item which does not appear on the agenda. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Is there any member of the public that would like to address us? Hearing none, we will move on to the agenda. Um, and are there any proposed additions or deletions for the agenda tonight? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as printed. And I note, we have several departments that are going to be reporting to us tonight, and we thank them for coming. We really appreciate it. Um, but I would ask you to try to be succinct so that we can get through the agenda as quickly as possible. Uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the June 28, 2022 meeting. Are there any suggestions for changes, recommendations for additions or deletions of the minutes? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve as printed? Randy Downing has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
George Lund, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is our annual solid waste management plan review. And I think we have a couple of representatives from our solid waste management plan group. So you would come forward and introduce yourselves, and we'll look forward to hearing you what you have to say.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Craig Wood. I'm with the Johnson County Department of Health and Environment, and I am the solid waste manager for the, for the county. Um, and I kind of head up the planning part, and I also do regulatory inspections of all the solid waste facilities across Johnson County.
And I'm Trent Thompson. I'm the program manager for the environmental department, DHE.
Uh, Mary was not able to, uh, she had a conflict tonight, uh, who's our, our director. And so I am going to be presenting to you guys today. There we go. Um, this is the third update. Uh, what we do through KDHE is we do annual updates on, on four years, and then we do a comprehensive rewrite of, of a larger document every five years. And so we are on the third, uh, annual update. Uh, so in two years, we'll be, we'll, we come before you guys every year, but in two years, we'll have a really big document to go over. So that will take a little bit more time. But, um, again, uh, it's required by Kansas statute 653405. And, um, really, one of the main vital things right now that we're looking at is, um, that we need to be looking at, uh, the life of the Johnson County landfill. Uh, right now, we have about 600,000 people, and it's estimated to be, uh, that it will last for about the next 20 years. Um, it says 25, but, uh, I just heard the other day, kind of an update, uh, with waste management. And, uh, so, uh, according to the US Census, it looks like by about 2040, uh, 2045, that we will have almost a million people in Johnson County approximately. So, uh, that's growing. So, um, I, with that growth, I would anticipate that, uh, we will have more trash, which means that that life will kind of speed up a little bit. So, uh, or maybe even a lot of it. So, um, so we're going to be watching that very, very carefully. Um, let's see the, and yeah, that there, through the state of Kansas, they have a solid waste management, uh, they have a solid waste permit to go up to a certain elevations across the, their landfill. And right now that, that permit, which will be the last one, uh, that has already been issued, um, will be expiring in 2043. So lots of, lots of things, uh, to come in the next 20 years. Um, last, I guess, kind of the other update I have is that, uh, our solid waste management committee is, uh, we still have a few empty seats, but we have a membership of 14, uh, with seven cities and a general public, a private industry, and a solid waste field, uh, and also some businesses, uh, and citizens, organizations, uh, that also are all on our committee, very similar to yours. Um, we meet bi-monthly, and, uh, they also approve, uh, that five-year plan I was, I was mentioning. So other than that, we really don't have a whole lot. Uh, things are kind of moving along, and, um, we, we've made a lot of good progress on, uh, some of the facilities. And, uh, uh, one of the things that has been improved is, uh, composting. And, uh, we have a lot of, a number of companies now that are picking up, uh, food waste and other organic matter to, uh, be able to compost. Um, single-family residents, uh, are, are working, uh, hard to put, uh, good recycling in there. And one of the things we're talking to them about is what can and can't go into your trashcan from a recycling standpoint for the, uh, facility that actually sorts the, the recyclable materials. So we're trying to make that as clean as possible so that we're not throwing anything away that we don't need to. Um, and then also our green business program continues, uh, to grow. Um, and let's see here, I talked about that. And, uh, the construction demolition landfills also, uh, we've been using them, uh, or working with them on, uh, technical assistance to try and, uh, remove some of the material going from there to going into the construction, uh, demolition landfills. Cause those are unlined, unlike the waste management one. Uh, and so, uh, uh, just only construction debris can be put in there. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Um, this is Mike Levin. I had a off-the-wall question because I recently went to a leadership program where they brought in a waste management company and discussed, they basically educate us on what should and should not go into. And my question is, are we doing anything to educate not just the adults, but the kids? And as they get older, they will then have a better idea of what, is there any kind of program we offer for that?
Um, actually, we are working with the schools, and, uh, it, it kind of depends, it kind of depends on which, uh, waste company you're working with. Because we have multiple of these, uh, what they're called, uh, material recovery facilities that have all the, uh, engineering to be able to sort all the different things. And some of them, uh, prioritize other, some different materials. So it, it is confusing. I, even as a professional, I have to kind of keep track of what's going on, and I'm always asking, are you adding things or you not? But most of the things are, you know, no food, uh, you know, uh, empty, empty and washout bottles and stuff, but mainly, uh, plastics right now. Um, you know, paper, uh, anything paper is, is good. Um, you know, most of the stuff that we normally do, uh, all gets recycled. But, uh, it's just trying to make sure that we don't add certain other things because some people just throw it all out. Sometimes they'll take all of their trash and put it in the recycling bin. So that's what we're trying to stop so we have a cleaner stream.
And I appreciate the answer. I'm just curious to be like an educational program to work with the schools is my question.
Yeah, if I can add to that, um, we do a pretty robust, uh, educational program with a lot of our local schools. Uh, we're currently working with Shawnee Mission School District or grant with K, um, K-State and the EPA to better inform the youth on how to properly recycle. Um, we also have a dedicated, uh, public information officer that also does, I think, around 100 presentations a year in local schools. So education is a big part of what we do.
Thank you. Appreciate both of you.
Uh, do different companies have different rules? That is different vendors within the county. Mine happens to be waste management, um, but there are several others in my neighborhood that provide the same services. Do they have different rules, uh, between the companies or are they, especially with regard to recycling, uh, are, are they all on the same page?
In general, yes, but there are differences between different haulers because some of them take, uh, some of the smaller haulers like waste management and then GFL both have their own material recovery facilities. And so really all the other ones pretty much take their stuff to those two facilities to get them sorted, uh, and take to market basically. So, um, uh, but some go up back up to Leavenworth County. Uh, and so they might have a different outlet up there if it's some, some of the smaller haulers that are coming down from, sorry, um, that are coming down from, uh, north and, and outside maybe, or some of the smaller haulers, uh, can have different, different requirements, basically.
Is, is all of our solid waste in Johnson County, uh, setting aside construction debris, uh, all taken to the facility up near Lake Quavira?
Um, it is not. Uh, one facility, uh, goes to, uh, the ham, uh, landfill over near, um, uh, Lawrence.
Okay.
That's the only one that, that does not go there. Uh, you know, the, the, everything else, uh, I believe the one, the GFL one down in Harrisonville, that might go south into, uh, Missouri or somewhere. I'm not exactly sure.
And, and where does construction debris go?
Um, we have three different facilities across Johnson County that, uh, will take them mainly. They're along kind of the 159th, uh, corridor. Uh, there's asphalt sales. There's, uh, uh, APAC is clear over on 167th and Metcalf. That's the only one kind of in the metro area. The others are on the skirt.
And Mr. Thompson, are you in charge of the hazardous waste material, uh, recycling that goes on up at the, uh, water plant?
Yes, I am.
That's a great service to the county. Yeah. I've used it before, and I, it seems to work really well.
Well, appreciate that, and it is part of our solid waste management plan. It's a big part of diverting that hazardous material from, uh, landfills and their environment. So I appreciate the company.
Lindsay Grisay, just a quick question. Um, ever since COVID, I think most of us would acknowledge that the number of packages we get delivered to our houses has, uh, drastically increased. And I was curious if, um, now, whereas before my recycling was maybe all aluminum cans of various, uh, vendors, right? But now it seems like it's all Amazon Prime boxes. And I guess I was curious if we had looked at, is there, I'm sure it's consistent across the county, is there, um, I know that most of the recycling places will take that, but I guess I was curious, is that kind of the content of our, you know, recycling? Are we going to do maybe different programs, maybe to invest in cardboard recycling?
That's a good, sure, I'll give it a go.
We can both try.
Yeah. Um, one of the things that, uh, we did basically under the, our, kind of our previous, uh, five-year plan was we actually did a study where we went to the landfills and actually did sorting to kind of get an idea of what's going into the landfill. And I would say, yes, probably cardboard, um, is, is more prevalent in, in the waste stream. But I, I think people are pretty good about, uh, knowing that that is recyclable. I think one of the things that we probably could improve upon is to make sure that people break down the boxes so that they're flat and they don't take up so much room. Uh, if, if you do even take crunching, I'm too, yeah, anyway. Um, but, uh, other than that, I think, uh, also the plastic, all the little like pillows and things like that, uh, you know, you can put those in with your grocery sacks in general. Uh, and I think, uh, our, our, um, um, our media person really does push a lot of that stuff. So if you want to look at, is it, I can't remember the, the handle on it. But anyway, uh, if you look up like recycle spot.org is, is a great, uh, resource.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jim Nice got a question. Uh, I know, uh, 2040s is way off, but at what point do you start looking for a new location? How, uh, you're probably looking now, maybe. Uh, and do you have a feel for where that, you know, next major, uh, part's going to be because it's a, you know, it's an unincorporated area and the county shrinks. Uh, it doesn't have to go in another incorporated area, I guess, but could you give us a feel for, uh, what you're looking for and when, when you might acquire the next property? Cause it's certainly going to be way before 2040.
Yes, um, I have some, I, I will say some ideas, but I'm certainly not, uh, settling on anything at this point. But, um, I do think, especially with a population, uh, that looks to be coming, um, you know, my opinion, uh, just generally is that we probably won't have it in Johnson County because, uh, land prices are going to be high. Um, and the other thing is that most of the time when people say, hey, I'm going to cite a landfill here, uh, lawsuits start cropping up very fast. And so it can take up to 10 years to do that, and I don't know that we have the time for that. Um, my thought is with a couple of landfills that have quite a bit of capacity, uh, into the future, uh, we would probably build, uh, maybe we have one transfer station. I, I believe that at least one other, uh, uh, transfer station, so like, like what, uh, Olathe has, where you would bring your truck in, uh, they would consolidate it onto a, onto a semi-trailer, and then they would haul it to, uh, further away spot. Um, would probably be my, if I had to bet my betting limit, which is a dollar, um, I, I'd probably do that. But, uh, um, I, that is one thing that we're going to start thinking about and really talking about a lot, uh, because, uh, with what we generate now, and we start adding approximately, you know, 300,000 to 400,000 people in the next 10 years, 10 to 20 years, um, you know, that, that's going to be a big deal.
Well, is there room in existing landfills in other counties or will?
Um, yes.
County have to buy the property outside the county and manage it? How, how would that work?
I don't know legally, uh, how that works, quite honestly. And I don't know, uh, I would have to talk to some of the lawyers and see, you know, what, what the feeling is, uh, if, if we could buy land outside of Johnson County. I have no idea. I've not explored that. But, um, to me, there are a number of, of landfills in the region that has some, um, capacity. But when we start putting our landfill material into their landfills, it's going to fill up pretty quick. Because we're, I mean, when we're talking about probably over a million tons per year, um, you know, that's going to, that's going to, that's going to compound very, very quickly. So I, that's my opinion only. Uh, that's my conjecture of kind of reading the tea leaves right now. But, um, I just don't see it happening in Johnson County just from a, uh, standpoint of being able to acquire land and, um, and also just, uh, dealing with all the lawsuits that I think would come with it.
Uh, Randy Downing, quick question. Oh, has all this emphasis on recycling, uh, containers and cardboard and all, has it extended the life of the landfill at all? I mean?
Absolutely it has. I, I feel very strongly that it has. We have maintained even growing that, that we are still, uh, basically generating at about four pounds per person per day. But when you're growing as fast as we are, it's outpacing, uh, you know, the, it's not outpacing the landfill, uh, space, but, um, you know, that we aren't gaining any more at this point. And so that's going to add up fast.
Good. Yeah. And, and good luck in citing a new landfill. I remember when they tried to expand the, whatever, I forget who owned the landfill down there before waste management, but, you know, there's some real battles go on just trying to even extend that one. So.
Yes.
I knew when it's going to be a real fight, so.
Yes, I know that like Lee Summit, they, they tried to find some space at another county, and, uh, they never did cite anything. So.
Mr. Wood, Mr. Thompson, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Uh, next item on the agenda is our Public Works update. I see we do have representatives from Public Works.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One second, this is Jay Leipzig. I wonder if the, if, if, I think it might be best if you all gave a formal recommendation to the finding, the board of county commissioners that the proposed Johnson County solid waste management plan is consistent with the Johnson County Rural Comprehensive Plan. I was going to ask these guys, but that, if that's what they need. Just to clarify something on the agenda.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's point, uh, point well taken, and I skipped over that. I apologize. Uh, would, uh, Mr. Thompson, would you, uh, agree that, uh, sending a finding to the BOCC regarding, um, your proposed Johnson County solid waste management plan is consistent with the Johnson County Rural Comprehensive Plan? Would that be useful, helpful to you?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do we have someone who'd like to make that recommendation?
This is Mike Levin. I'll make the recommendation.
Okay. And a second?
Second, Randy Downing.
All right. All in favor of that recommendation being forwarded to the BOCC indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. All right. You have your recommendation then.
Thanks.
And thank you, uh, Jay for pointing out that. All right. Public Works updates.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Fosse. I'm the engineering manager for Public Works, and we'd like to start out this evening with our 2022 edition update to our street construction and storm drainage standards for subdivisions. Uh, we presented this to you back in 2020. I don't know who all was here for that. Um, and then COVID hit, we put this on hold, and now we're moving forward with it again. And it really hasn't changed too much. We are updating our specifications to the current KDOT version. Uh, the, the ones that is in the current one, you, or current specs, you can't even get on the KDOT website anymore. So get tons of questions on that. And then that's for every item except for pavement, and we'll be using KC Metro APWA for our pavement design. All text describing how, uh, I, how to construct an item in there has been deleted. I think you all saw the red or got the red line versions of this to take a look at. And, uh, the user's directed to the correct KDOT specification. And then references to Overland Park standards have been changed to KC Metro APWA for any items and standard draw, that aren't detailed in the standard drawings of the document. Uh, revisions to the detail sheets, we updated the surfacing types to match county standards. We added slope clarification notes to the typical sections. And then we updated, made material changes throughout the standards for current availability. We've also added a standard detail sheet showing how to add lane width to an existing at, and shoulders to an existing asphalt road. We basically want those added as gravel out to the right width so that when we come back and pave, we can get those paved correctly. And then we added typical section details. You'll find these in all of our plans that we put together. There's a lot of good notes on there of how to do entrance details, um, subgrade, all that kind of stuff in there so that the developer and their engineers know what they need to be designing to. And then on our typical section sheets, particularly this type B collector street, uh, typical, we've added the minimum infrastructure improvements down there at the bottom for existing asphalt roads and gravel to gravel roads, uh, just to make it a lot clearer to the developer what they need to do in order to meet those standards. And that's really the majority of the, the changes. There's lots of little clarifications in there, but, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Uh, Jim Nice, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, one is, uh, back in the day, at one time, if you lived in the country on a gravel road, neighbors could chip in to get the road chipped and sealed. Is that program still available?
No.
Okay. I thought that was the case.
We do have a dust control, uh, cost share program that they can participate in now.
Okay. And if you participate in it, do you pay for the dust control?
Uh, you pay for, in most cases, you pay, the resident pays for half and the county pays for the other.
Okay. What's the cost per, uh, what is it on a hundred yards or on a?
That I do not know.
Okay. Uh, here's the man with the checkbook. Hey.
Good evening, Brian. With Public Works. It's about 250 apiece.
Okay. Next question is, is, uh, you can stay there. How you doing? Good to see you again.
It's Public Works night.
Long time no see. For 2023, uh, do you have just a feel for the upgrades of roads from gravel to, I remember at this point in time, you said there was like, quite a few miles, yes, to gravel road. Do you have any kind of, uh, 2023 numbers or ideas what you're going to upgrade from gravel to harder surface?
That's our next subject.
Well, it is.
We can skip to it if we're done with Jeff.
I don't care if you skip to it. Chairman doesn't care. That'd be fine. I think that's the, and then next logical place to go. And then I had one other question in maybe, uh, what, what is, uh, mid, the long-term plan for the west side of that, in the unincorporated area? I know we were talking earlier about the old gateway. It was a 21st century gateway, and now that's gone.
Yes, next to.
Yeah, but is there any, uh, you know, with the traffic on the west side of town and that, could you give us an overview of where that might be going in the next, you know?
Just reading my mind, throwing me softballs.
That's it. I'm finished.
Okay.
Thanks.
Is, is there anything else for Jeff?
Any questions for Mr. Fosse? No, thank you very much. Right. So I did see, I think last month, folks were talking about what are some of the projects we're looking at, and like you said, specifically what, what gravel roads we're looking at. We have every few years come to the planning commission, you just kind of as a courtesy and say, hey, here's what we're looking at. Here's, here's some of the developments and improvements. So we put together this map, and I'll kind of walk through it and show you what we're, what we're looking at. And I'm going to wind the clock back a little bit. And if you can follow my cursor on your screen, we were at one point making improvements on 199th Street between US 169, US 69. And we had completed a, a chunk by the city of Spring Hill and then over by Stillwell. This red section, we do plan to do someday. There's a six-mile stretch there. We were getting ready. We had plans completed, and then the Burlington Northern came in. And we met with our board, and we said, we need to switch. The traffic's not there yet. It's going to take a few years, but we see it coming. And so we switched to 199th Street west of US 169, and we started at 56 Highway. KDOT actually did an improvement of the intersection of 56 Highway and 199th Street. And we started working our way to the east, and we have completed safety improvements on 199th Street up to Gardner Road.
And we started working our way to the east, and we have completed safety improvements on 199th Street up to Gardner Road. We have, and you see this black section between Claire and 169. We have a joint project with the city of Spring Hill. We hope to be able to do that next year, 2023. So there's one of the projects that we're looking at for 2023. And then it's kind of in a little bit grayed. We had planned to do the section between Gardner and Claire. It's a three mile stretch. Gardner did a, an annexation along that and took control of that. So we jumped over that. Uh, other road improvements that we see in our very near future are Mission Road. The, and that's in response really to the island annexation area of Overland Park. And we, we are all aware of the housing boom and, and the demand there. We're seeing hundreds of houses going in, and there's gonna be really two major paths, and that's going to be, folks are gonna use Mission Road to go north and south. And then 183rd Street to get over to Metcalf and then US 69. So those are a couple of other really big projects that we're looking at. Uh, Heritage Park, right in the middle of the county. That's an interesting one. In that Heritage Park is the county's, and the county developed it. The cities are not likely to annex it, and if they were, it's not gonna develop and they won't collect excise fees. So we are participating in those two mile stretches on the west side and the east side. City of Olathe on the west side, city of Overland Park on the east side, and those are gonna be big expensive four lane type of urban projects. I would guess the east side might be a two lane or a three lane. We haven't decided on that yet, but those are gonna be tens of millions of dollars that we'll be spending there. So in, in this southern area, those are the big projects. Although I would note, you, you can kind of see it hashed out there. Waverly Road, south of 56. There's a little quarter mile stretch of gravel there that we've wanted to do some interim type of, of improvement for years. We are working with Gardner and Edgerton right now on some type of cost sharing and agreement and what that project might look like. We don't have anything on the books yet, but I hope in the next couple of years, three years, that we get something done there. That, that's, that needs some improvement. And then Jim, you were asking about the west side, and that's interesting. So DeSoto has annexed 6,000 acres in the plan. And we've all heard about the Panasonic battery uh company that's coming in there, and I think that's just the tip of the iceberg. I, I think this is the uh Burlington Northern Development in the northwest part of the county. And the county had always contemplated on determining some east-west and north-south routes in that area. Uh, I, I think here in the next few months, we're gonna be starting to look at that with, with K dot, with Douglas County, DeSoto, uh, Edgerton, Gardner. How do we want the connectivity in that, that area? And there you see we drew some boxes around there. So that, we, we have, always have smaller maintenance projects, but those are the real big projects in the future corridors that we see planning in this area. So I'll, I'll stop there and see what kind of questions.
Could you make, could you make that available to us?
Absolutely. Uh, yes, you bet.
Is Lindsey Gressay, are the improvements to 199th to support the potential trucking lanes from the intermodal going to US 69?
So there's safety and structural improvements. And yes, we're putting extra structure on 199th Street. We're also adding, the, the issue we have in the county, our asphalt roads, they were built on top of the, you know, the dirt roads that the settlers built. And then they put gravel on it of, of, you know, back in the fifties and sixties, and then in the eighties and nineties, they started putting asphalt on it. Well, they, they're, they're still in that same narrow right away. So what we are doing, those projects are adding shoulders, creating a clear zone and improving drainage. They're not, we're not really adding capacity. We're not adding lanes, if that was your question.
Yeah, that was more, my question was the, you know, I wasn't sure if they, the surface was being adjusted to contemplate the heavy, you know, the weight of, you know, constant, you know, tractor trailer.
Right.
Traffic. So it sounds like that's not the case at this point.
199th is designated as a, a type three in Karnup. That's the highest designation, four to six lane someday. Look, it would, I mean, it's hard for us to think of it that way, but 135th Street in Overland Park, where it's six lanes there by US 69. That's the vision for 199th Street. I don't see the county doing that type of improvement, but when Spring Hill, Edgerton, Olathe, Gardner are developing, that's what will eventually be there.
Thank you.
Mike Levin, I had a quick question. You have a couple of circles here, and I don't know. Well, do they have a specific meaning other than the lines? Is that a?
They're a bridge project.
Oh, bridge project. Thank you.
What? And the, the red circle, I guess I should note on the northwest, that's the DeSoto Bridge. It's uh, I think it was about 75 years old. You know, 75 to 100 years is about what you expect out of a bridge. Uh, we inspect that frequently. It's still in decent shape. Uh, that's gonna be a very expensive project someday.
Uh, Jim Neese, what's your? You know, what's your uh idea where you think that the connectivity between 70 or 10 down to us due south uh connect in some point like the, I mean, the, the 21st century project was
Right.
Massive, but I mean, what's your? You think there's gonna be a northwest corridor between 10 and I-35 there at some point in time?
I think that's gonna get talked about here in the next few years. You know, that's the outer loop, and it's been talked about for decades and various alignments.
It's getting, it's getting pushed to that.
You know, with these types of major developments in DeSoto, I think that will push even harder for something like that connecting up to 70.
Randy Hutchins, so going back to the question I think Mr. Neese asked. You know, I think we talked about there's approximately a hundred and, was it about 128 to 133 miles of um gravel roads? Um, how many miles do we have planned and budgeted for in 2022, 2023 budget cycles?
The quarter mile on Waverly.
So I don't think a hundred and some miles, we've got a quarter mile planned.
Correct. Yeah, we watched the traffic volumes, and if they get up over 300, we start to look at those for a project improvement. We're doing traffic counts this year.
Okay. Um. Mr. Leipzig, I know we've had some discussions about um developing a subcommittee of which we could die, deep dive a process in which we can get uh members of the unincorporated area involved. Um, and bringing forth concerns in terms of safety as well as, you know, continued development out in the unincorporated area and investment. Is it appropriate that uh we discuss that tonight and see if we can get something set up to where we can start bridging the gap between the unincorporated citizens and the budget cycle to make sure there's um, so some improvements made in the unincorporated area?
Sure, Hutchins. I, um, Jay Leipzig, I, I appreciate your question. I understand your, your concern there, your, your comments. I think though, for this evening, I think the purpose of this discussion, I would say no. I think that's something we need to certainly we'll, we'll, we'll need to involve the, the Board of County Commissioners as well, so we start to look at that. So uh, um, I, the, the short answer to that is, is additional discussion needs to, needs to happen. We need to do some preparatory work there as well, I think.
Okay, thanks, Jay.
Yeah. Uh, can I recommend that um either you or Sean or someone else from planning uh buttonhole a couple of county commissioners, especially the ones who represent the rural area? And tell them of the planning commission's desire to have a study group that would uh be able to advise and receive information with regard to uh rural roads?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh Jay Leipzig, these, these minutes are recorded and there's a transcript of that too. So yeah, your, your statement is, is, will be for the record.
Uh, thanks. Appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I think at some point in time, Jim Neese, we need to kind of have defined for us what is our purview in how should I put this? What is, what's in our place to recommend or have a discussion at some point in time? Where I think it's out of our, our, our uh charge and goes to the county commissioners and department heads like that. So I I, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think at some point in time, we need to be, kind of have a definition of what we, what we should be talking about or just blowing in the breeze.
Well, yeah, and I agree with you, uh, Mr. Neese, and I think that one of the things that we might consider is having a more definitive statement in the comprehensive plan with regard to um the county's position on improvement of, of rural roads. Um, and I don't think that necessarily defines it, but I think it puts it in our purview so that um a group, a study group like we're talking about would come within the uh, you know, the concerns of the annual uh review of the comprehensive plan.
Chairman, uh Jay Leipzig, just additional comment as well, but the Director Commissioner Neese, uh, one of the, the things that will be discussed later on this evening is the training, uh, future training date on September 27th. And that will be one of the topics that we'll be discussing is what the charges of planning commission, what the official role is for the planning commission. So we'll have some discussion about that particular issue on September 27th. But also, uh Chairman, to your point, I, I think uh, uh, something along those lines is, is certainly warranted and and is possible. Uh, but some type of statement in the comprehensive plan or, or something like that as we go through that, that process.
That's good. Any uh other questions for Mr. Pedic?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Um, there's no specific recommendation for us to do anything with regard to the Public Works updates, and thank you, Mr. Fos and Mr. Pedic. Appreciate it. Um, next item on the agenda is the New Century and Executive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Review and Update.
Good evening, Commissioners, Sean Penley, County Planner and Staff. I'll provide a brief update on the land use compatibility plan updates for New Century Air Center and Executive Airport. As you know, we have recently started work on updating the land use plans for both airports. Those are uh outdated. It's been uh over 20 years for both of the airport uh land use compatibility plans. And so we recently engaged with uh Kaufman Associates and a, a contract was awarded by the B O C C for uh, to uh have Kaufman Associates assist county staff and updating those plans. We had an initial meeting with uh Kaufman, and they are going to be assisting with the formation of a advisory committee uh that will have representatives from the planning commission, Board of County Commissioners, Airport Commission, and the various cities that will be involved in these. So with both of these airports, we'll have the cities of Gardner, Olathe, and Overland Park, and there will be representatives from each of the cities. And then two of the planning commissioners uh that we'll, we'll talk about in a minute for appointment on that committee. We um will, we anticipate that this work for both of these uh updates, they'll be done together. We'll be updating both of the airport uh land use compatibility plans at the same time. Um, and they'll, uh, this process will be about 12 to 15 months, we expect. And um we will have our first, we expect to have our first advisory committee meeting and public workshop meetings for both airports in the first week of October. So the information going out on that soon, once we finalize the advisory committee members. And then uh we uh finalize the dates and locations, but we anticipate that first uh week in October, we'll have those uh first advisory committee meetings and public workshops. And we um, so it'll be over the course of uh just over a year. We expect there'll be four advisory committee meetings. So generally, we'll plan on quarterly meetings, and then there will be up to eight workshops. So that four for each airport. So the plan will be to have workshop meetings and invite the public from both of the airports, and we'll try to keep them both at the respective airports. So we'll have a, uh, public workshop meetings at both at the Executive Airport. Um, where I believe are the plan, we're, we're trying to find it somewhere on the airport property. And then, and then also for New Century, where we think that that'll be also again near New Century, but those details will be coming out soon. We're also gonna be updating our website to include public information for these plan updates. We, we're working with our technology staff and also Kaufman Associates. Kaufman will be forming a website that'll be dedicated for these updates. We'll have that website link to our county uh planning up, uh, planning page as well as the Airport Commission page. So we'll be uh having information available online for both of these workshops as we go along and making sure we get input from the public and, and basically updating everyone on dates for meetings and, and general content as it's ready. So uh, we're ready to get started very soon. The first action will be for uh planning commission to appoint two committee members to the uh advisory committee. We get that official announcement and then we'll, I'll start forming the meetings uh very soon.
Yeah, um, and Sean, you and I have talked about this, and I've taken the liberty of talking with Dave Johns and Roger Mason. Uh, Roger, because of his past experience working with airport, and Dave, because of his proximity. Uh, they have both agreed that they would like to serve on the uh workshop team.
And actually, if I could correct, I think we talked originally maybe about Roger, but then we changed it Randall Downing, correct? Randy Downing would be uh the member instead of Roger.
Okay.
Yeah. Initially, we thought about Roger, but then we're uh Randy, since his previous involvement with the Airport Commission. So Randy and.
My mistake.
Yeah.
Roger, you're so gracious.
Yeah.
Well, we've just, we've taken the burden off your shoulders, and you're, you're right. There's only one thing shorter than my memory. Yeah. Uh, okay. Randy, thank you for being willing to serve on that.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that, and uh, yeah, looking forward to that. And as I mentioned, uh, we'll be providing details. Once those uh committee, the advisory committee meetings are set, we'll be sending that out, uh coordinated with Mr. Downing and Mr. Johns sending that. And, and as well, we still need to finalize the membership of the, the other. So I think uh our planning commission now will have those first two appointed, and then we have uh, um, I believe uh, the airport commissioners, two commissioners have been appointed. So now we just need to form the rest of the advisory committees and then we'll be ready. So happy to answer any other updates, Jay, if you have anything.
Chairman, just as a point of clarification, Jay Leipzig, so there are two separate plans, one steering committee. And uh, ready to start very soon, and, and it'll take, we believe, about 15 months, uh 12 to 15 months.
Well, good. Well, thank you, Randy. I appreciate it. Um, all right. Anything further on that topic?
Nothing further. Thank you.
All right. We will move on now to the uh item J, Sunflower Army Ammunition Conceptual Land Use Plan Review and Update.
Uh, Diane Wicklund will be providing an update on that.
And this Chairman, I'll, I'll start just a couple of sentences. As was mentioned earlier this evening. Uh, the uh, the city of DeSoto has recently annexed uh about 6,000 acres of the former Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant. There's a major manufacturing Panasonic is, is moving uh about 600 acres of that of that site, the former Sunflower facility, which kind of necessitates the need to, to uh do some, some, do some updates on our Sunflower uh plan. And so with that, uh Diane is gonna give an overview tonight, and we have the direction and kind of a, a, a process lined out of where we go in the future. We've got a couple of major projects here that we're starting at the same time.
Diane.
Uh, Diane Wicklund, uh Planning Department. Uh, so just to kind of follow up. So tonight, we're just kind of really introducing this idea of wanting to update um, the uh Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant, uh that uh land use plan update, uh which is an area plan uh that's included in our uh rural comprehensive plan. Uh, it has a few different uh kind of subarea plans in it. Um, and that just, you know, kind of a reminder that our comprehensive plan is that long range uh vision and, and planning document for the unincorporated part of the county. Um, and so like Jay just said, um, so, you know, in January of this year, the city of DeSoto um annexed about 6,250 acres uh of this, of the Army Ammunition Plant site. And um, and uh, so, so just a quick update. So that area plan was adopted in 1998 and was kind of in response to the US government's uh planned disposal of that Sunflower plant. Um, and so the goal of ha- having that land use plan was just to establish some policies and guidelines for the redevelopment of the Sunflower site. So, so kind of given that uh very large annexation, um, I, I think this is planning staff um feels like it's necessary to review and update um if advisable from the planning commission, this, that land use plan. Uh, and um which would kind of look at addressing uh the area southwest of the city of DeSoto. Um, uh, and so, so kind of our idea, and we've got a map, no. Well, here's just a map. So this is just a map of the annexation area, the recent annexation from city of DeSoto. And so the area that they annexed is all in green and they went down to. 127th Street. So that just kind of gives you an idea of. The area that they they annexed. So a big portion of that Sunflower. Army ammunition that are area plans. So so it really is kind of a necessity to. Updated and and kind of review that plan. So planning staff's. Ideas that and some of you were here a few years ago, maybe. Four or five years ago when we did a a subcommittee for the looking at direct access onto the arterial. Roads. I don't know if anybody remembers that or not, but. And so what we did with that update was to, we had a subcommittee of a few planning commissions. And that subcommittee met, had six, seven, eight meetings. And then they would bring updates and recommendations back to the full planning commission for a review. And as so I think planning staff is recommending that maybe same model here is to have a subcommittee. And then that subcommittee would receive updates from from different groups that will have come in. And it would, of course, also be open to the public, but but that's that's our idea is to do this subcommittee. In that that would be kind of how we would work through to get some recommendations going for the update. And then, of course, then the full planning commission would would review those and then come up with a recommendation. And so it would be a. Eventually, an update to our rural comprehensive plan is what it would be. So. So really for tonight and and kind of like the the update to the airport compatibility plans. You we will also plan to have a separate website. To to keep people updated and being also to have. A place for public to kind of give some comments and responses to. Land use scenarios and in plans that, you know, the the subcommittee is is recommending. In addition to, we'll have some. Public meetings to get input from from the residents in the area. And so tonight, one of our first actions is. Would like to see if we can get five volunteers for a for a steering committee and hopefully. If we could get members identified tonight. And then maybe hopefully we could get our first subcommittee meeting. Set for maybe mid to end of September. And then kind so we can can get the plan update going. So. That's really kind of our our ask for this evening. So. I don't know if Jay and Sean or or the chairman wants to add to that.
Yeah, I'll just ask for a show of hands of people who would like to serve on the committee for. The comprehensive plan with regard to the old Army Ammunition Plant. Roger, you're chairman. We'll make you chairman. Oh, wait a minute. That's right. I'd be glad to serve. Anybody else? Lindsay?
Oh, no, sorry. I was pointing.
Okay. All right, Jim.
That's Mike Levin. I had a question. So I apologize. What type of time commitment are we looking at?
Yeah, so I just haven't thought about it a whole lot yet, but I'm guessing. Our subcommittee would probably meet. I'm thinking probably anywhere from, you know, I don't know, five, six, seven meetings, maybe, probably at the most. And then hopefully maybe be able to attend those public open houses, maybe. And so I'm guessing. You know, those subcommittee meetings might be two hours, hour and a half, two hours long. So if you take that times maybe six.
Is there a date that you're looking to have this completed by?
I don't know if Jay wants to add to that.
Levin, we don't have a have a set date. That's one of the things I think as we start. Meeting with the subcommittee, we'll have a better idea of the that. That's one of our first tasks is to put together kind of an overall plan. But just to kind of further elaborate on Diane's response. It and there again, it's up to the group with availability, but I'm thinking. About two hour meetings, maybe twice a month, perhaps. I don't know if that's possible. Some I think some of that might vary in terms of the amount of work that's necessary between meetings. But that's kind of just a ballpark or a guesstimate. The other question I would have for you all that are interested in doing it, was is it convenient to meet during the daytime, like over lunch, for example? Or in the afternoon, any particular time that would be better for you, but but I think we'll. That's part of what we're, I don't think it'll be more than two hour. I think after two hours, people begin to begin to lose your attention. And in that time, so.
Well, I think we need to consider the possibility of virtual meetings as well, which would mean, you know, people could. Conduct the meetings from their office or from home.
Yeah, if we can, if we can. Include or potentially include what the chairman said, then I would be very much open. My concern is my schedule and finding. During the daytime, two hours or plus to go travel, get back.
Yeah.
So.
We could certainly do that. And but, yeah, with with the virtual capabilities that we have now.
Yeah, so Chairman, I'd be willing to do that.
Well, and there, you know, because we can open those to the public. If if we want to, or probably we should. I think that's the way to go for at least some of the meetings. All right, so.
So it looks like we had three people so far, and Roger and Chris.
I've got a question, Jim Neese. Can you have a meeting like that without having? Can you have it like an executive meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it I mean, it it we have to comply with Kansas Open Meetings Act and. But that doesn't mean every single meeting is is subject to that. But, you know, we want to make sure that we don't violate the the open meetings law.
I think we just publish for that notice in case we in case we have quorum, then we just publish for that, but.
Yeah.
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 Yep.
Okay, so we've got Jim, myself. Mr. Levin. And Roger.
That's I think that's four. I don't know.
You know, a couple of people that are not here might might be.
Yeah, we can. We can certainly talk to those who aren't here and see if they'd like to serve on it. And five would put us under a quorum also, so it wouldn't be a planning commission meeting. So.
This is Sean Penley, County Planning Staff. I would suggest five, that's what we had talked about as far as our special committees. That's an ideal number, I think, for five. You know, more than that, then to get more like a quorum or.
I'll see if I can do a little arm twisting between.
Yeah.
Now and the end of the week.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Question, Diane. What are the boundaries of the Army Ammunition Plant that are outside of what has been annexed by? By DeSoto?
Yeah, so that's a good question. That's one of the maps that we're going to be working on, hopefully early on to get something from Ames. We don't have anything like that yet, but what I can show you. So here's the area, obviously, that's been annexed. I can show you what our land use plan for the, you know, what's currently in for the area plan. But yeah, we'll definitely need to kind of get an overlay map. Showing showing that difference, but just to show you.
Just did a rough overview, though. The city of Anac or the city of DeSoto annexed about 6,000 acres. There's about 3,500 acres of the Sunflower area that is still in the unincorporated area, just in broad general numbers.
So here's just on the on your screen is just what the current current. Future land use plan is, but.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll look forward to a map that overlays the two in the future.
Yep.
Okay. Anything further or any other questions for Ms. Wicklund? If not, item K, updates and other business.
Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, just a quick. Went out, the the update, the B O C C actions, it was included in your packet for you this evening. I will elaborate on those. If you do have questions about it, please feel free to to reach out anytime. Happy to answer any questions on that.
All right. And lastly, Director's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig. There are several items to report on this evening or divided updates. First one is the zoning board. Bylaws. We have, as you may recall, we went through the bylaws and that and that exercised the planning commission. We are, we're working with our zoning boards to start that process. We hope to have that finished by the end of the year. But we're starting out with the southwest zoning board, then going to southeast and then northwest. So our goal is to have that finished by the end of December, if possible. But we have a standard template. We're working with the legal department to go through that process. So. That'll be forthcoming.
Is the plan to make them all identical?
Is, yeah, they're all fairly similar. The language is is similar, the the format of the of the document is similar. Yes. The the other bit of of good news, number two, the code enforcement webpage, as you might recall, Commissioner. Rast had had asked for a some some process that could be developed for for making code complaints on the county's website. We were able to do that and and set up something. So we have a portal. Now that the the public can can click a link on our planning webpage. Takes you to code enforcement. You could anonymously file a code enforcement complaint. Or or be able to ask questions about anything and it and there's a there's performance guarantees and or not guarantees, but. Stipulations in there about how soon staff will get back back with you. And it's fairly self explanatory. It's it's a fairly very simple, easy form to fill out. And then that that link then goes to the planning department, our planner of the day, or our code enforcement officer that can investigate it and review it. So. I appreciate her her comment because that's something long overdue. We've talked about doing it for quite some time. So to have that motivation to do it is a is a good thing. So I'm happy to have that. It's worked out very well so far. The other thing to note that I mentioned earlier this evening, future agenda items, we had talked about a couple of times about having training, getting in. Having a formalized training for the planning commission as well as the zoning boards. It's been kind of a difficult time getting dates as we get in summer schedule. But we have identified, I think, the the best date to use would be our next meeting of the planning commission, which is September 27. At 5:45, we'll have a typical light, light dinner. For the meeting and then it'll be a joint meeting between the planning commission and the zoning boards. And we're going to have them divided up. I'm not sure if we'll have the the planning commission focused training first or the zoning would focus training first, but. It should be a very fun and I think informative evening. Penn peg trends leading that effort. So we will have that. We do have that scheduled. Okay. And that would be chair. That's all I have this evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to what Jay said, Sean Penley, the for that meeting, the session, we since we will be also inviting the zoning boards and B Z A as well with the with the planning commission. We'll need to have more space. So we may have that as we have in the past. I think some of our joint meetings, we've had that in the basement and we may have in our cafeteria area. And so that has more room. And so we'll have, we'll we'll send up more details, though, for that training and let everyone know. And we may also split that up to our part, maybe part of the session we're talking about, will apply to all boards. And then we may break that part of that up. And if there's more specific issues for zoning boards, then maybe the the other planning commissioners may be able to leave after first half. We'll. We're trying to set aside the actual outline of that agenda, but we'll send those details out to everyone as well as the reminder to save the date. So we'll remind everybody about that that date. Thanks.
Mr. Commissioner, I just have a quick question. So I think that we had talked of, this is Lindsay Garcia. I think we had talked about earlier this summer, but, you know, with summer schedules, maybe having some sort of kind of work group here for the planning commission to maybe determine what. Our priorities were going to be. I think that, you know, we had talked about having a group session to make sure that. I guess I was just curious what the status was because I think you had created a good document where it kind of outlined what the staff's priorities were. And then there were some suggestions from some of the commissioners. I was just curious where those are fitting into the future agendas.
Yes, Commissioner, we did have, you're right, I believe, in going back even in April, I think we started to develop that that work plan. Actually, I remember talking about it in February. But we had developed that document. The planning commission looked at it a couple of times. I believe we we looked at it in June. Initial review and then there was significant discussion on that document during our July meeting. Well, so that it it's and it's. It's incorporated to all of the the the. The priorities, objectives, the planning commissioners, as well as some of the staff things, too, and kind of put put them together.
Okay.
It is a part of that 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 record.
Okay.
Before we adjourn. We. Gave up our last meeting because we didn't have a quorum. And one thing I said to Mr. Leipzig and I think to Mr. Penley both. Is that if we do not have items that require us to vote on them in order to pass them on. It would be my recommendation in the future that we go ahead and hold the meetings. As long as a majority of the board can be there, even if we don't have a quorum. I think that way it kind of moves us along a little bit. And those who can't attend. Can read the minutes and or can attend by coming in by Zoom. Because sometimes that's just the problem is that someone can't be here. But until or unless that situation arises, we won't have to deal with it. But I just wanted to let you know that we talked about that possibility. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Been moved by. Randy Downing. All right, second by George Lund. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.